Do I have a motion to come back in from closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we come back in from executive closed session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes, sir.
I say yes. Do I have a motion to so certify that we talk about only those things that we listed?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we certify executive session. We entered into executives' closed session pursuant to certain sections of law, and that was what we discussed in executive session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Motion and a second. Start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie, would you be so kind to do the pledge and invocation?
Just rise. Hailing Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity together, together. We ask that you watch over and bless this meeting. Lord, just ask that you keep us all safe on our travels home and be with those that are not able to be here. Lord, yes, ask to keep us mindful of this and let this meeting continue in peace and harmony. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody, and especially the fifth grade from Gladeville Elementary School, and the parents and the teachers. Glad y'all are here. All right, we'll start with citizens' time.
Hi, signed up.
Looks like you're the only one, Doug. Come forward.
I come back again just to keep this on your mind as far as Recreation Department, because as you all know, of course, to get good businesses in such an area, they look at schools and they look at recreation when they bring their managers and others in, as well as hiring out here. And the Rec Department's doing a great job as it is now, but I want to bring up just three quick things. Per the changing of dates at the Woodlawn School gym that a lot of folks are utilizing and youngsters have utilized in the past, I know they're scrambling for places to do different teams and all that I've been reading about. But please keep in mind, and let us all know as that progresses, I understand they found some asbestos, they found some other problems, perhaps it might delay the actual construction in the main woodlawn area into those apartments. Whoops. So if possible, those of us that are using it, you know, if y'all can let us know like a couple of weeks ahead and things like that, so we can... Also, that would help the Rec Department, of course, and then folks like myself that use it, my wife for walking and the other activities. I wanted to bring that up first, because I realize it's not going exactly on the schedule as it was talked about. Second thing was, I would really like to see you use perhaps some salary that might have been left over with the retirement of Libby Manning to move someone into the head of that position, because I understand the young man doing it now with his master's degree is working the chains at the football game for the kids. He's having to schedule everything. He's been doing it for several months now since she retired, and I think he deserves to be in a position. I'd like to see him kept, because he was trained under her as to how to schedule all this, keep it together for the kids, the sports, the soccer. We've got basketball coming up, baseball, you know, all the stuff that goes on. He's well-trained to take a position like that. And if there's any of that salary left, I know you probably wouldn't be able to bring someone in at whatever she made, but still, a part of that to keep him in there, and maybe some other folks deserve it, because they're working very hard to keep stuff going for the youth on up to us older folks in the county. I think we need someone who's actually in, you know, in that position as head of that department. Last thing I wanted to bring up is be aware of the part-time positions during these transitions. We have a gentleman who comes in at 6:00 a.m. I don't know who else is going to volunteer for that if they close down for a month or two and he's making part-time, no benefits and such. There's a lot of young people who work it, who go to college, and some of them come and go, which leaves them shorthanded sometimes. So I really would like y'all to keep an eye on the Rec Department there. I realize what the rules are, but they need to be able to function, keep things going, because a lot of sports are going to be starting up, and then in the spring as well. So if y'all can keep on that and try to fill that lead position, and also keep track of the part-time people when they leave for college or such, because that then affects like the refereeing and the chains at the games. I mean, all the stuff that's going to be coming up, running the stands to have the snacks and everything. And that's basically all I had. I know I keep after y'all on that, but I am very concerned, because as an elderly person in the county, I do use the facilities, and I know others do, and I would like to see the Rec Department continue to be able to keep things going smoothly and working for all of us in the county. Thank you very much tonight.
Elderly is a matter of perspective. I will say that we plan on having a public hearing soon as we get the stuff signed to do the thing at Woodlawn, so we can meet probably over there, meet with the citizens, and discuss what we... what can go on and what can't go on during that, the construction phase.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'm going to just keep us up to date.
All right. Thank you, Doug. All right. Time to start the public hearing on the VDOT SMART scale. Start that at 6:12. You want to listen to the citizens first, or we want to do the presentation?
I think we need a presentation first.
First.
Come on, Matt, Michael. Big guy. Michael, Michael is our planning director at the district office. He's all things SMART scale, so I'm going to defer to him with some of the... Just give you a brief overview of some of the details.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. Again, Michael Gray, I've been in the district about 16 years out of the office in Salem, and I believe this is my first time up here to the board in Carroll County.
Thank you, sir.
Been most other places around the district, but first time up here. Give you a quick background. SMART scale, if you don't know, is the state, is the Commonwealth Transportation Board's. That's their kind of method that they review projects around the state and then make decisions on how to fund those projects. This was a significant shift that occurred about 2015. Three years, 2013, 14, and 15, state legislation made some changes to the laws that led to this. So the old system of each county getting a little bit of money, the urban areas getting money, and then primary and interstates getting money, kind of went by the wayside. And now it's a competitive process around the state where half of the money that's available is allocated to high priority projects, so basically anything in the state that meets certain criteria. A lot of that is interstates and primaries and big type of projects. The other is each district gets an amount. So then the counties and cities in each district compete for that type of money. As I mentioned, this has started in 2015. We've had basically three rounds of it, and what I'm calling a round is we had 2016, 2017, then 2019. It's about a year and a half process, so it starts in March of one year, and by the time the CTP makes their decision, you're at June the following year. We're getting ready to start that again. So this coming year in 2020, we'll be opening up what we call the SMART portal, and it's an online system that allows the counties and the regional groups and the cities to go in there and put their project ideas in there. And then we work with each locality to help them kind of develop the information for their project, and then it gets scored. It's finally submitted in the summer, so in August it'll be the final supplemental of that project after we've worked with each locality and each regional group to help define their project and put all the necessary information in with it. And then it goes to the CTP, and they make some... We do a scoring process actually in that fall, so in the fall of 2020 will be a scoring process of looking at all the projects and evaluating those against one another. And then after that, the CTP will start their deliberations in January of 2021, making a final decision in June of '21. In our district, we've had, let's see, between, I think it's about 13 to 20 projects that have gotten funding each of those three years. It's a little less than we used to see in terms of all the counties and cities' programs, but you know, when we're dealing with scarce state resources in terms of trying to fund transportation projects, it can only go so far. So we've had about 40, 45 to 50 projects submitted in our district each time, but like I said, only a fraction of those have actually received funding. So we're here tonight to help answer questions if you have that, and you're in good hands with Lisa, but we try to give Lisa the support from our district office as well.
Yeah, the sooner we start, the better detail we can develop, and you know, we're always there to help with your applications and your estimates and your designs. And I know I have heard from some of you all and have got some project suggestions. 52, Brushy Fork, Flower Gap, Intersection 10221. So we've got some real good ideas, but interested in hearing some more, see what you want to do.
Just to add, it is a competitive process, so there's a scoring, the scoring I mentioned. There's certain criteria that your project could be not, it'd be good if it met. There's congestion, there's safety, accessibility, economic development, environment. So it has to meet certain criteria that are laid out in our kind of detailed guidelines. Don't want to get into those with you tonight, but we'll be glad to provide you or help answer questions about that if we need to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to do the school? Gladeville Elementary School is only... Come on, come on. We'll find out if the board supervisors are smarter than the fifth grader, which we know they are.
Good evening, guys. We are from Gladeville Elementary. I am one of the two robotics coaches, and this, they had to find a problem within our city that they wanted to talk about and to find a solution to. So this is their solution they came up with. They're a little bit shy, because they have not presented this to anyone yet. So I'm trying to get them a little bit warmed up. So if you guys can give them some love before they get started.
Hi, my name is Bristol Doe. This is Team Gladeville Kids on the Block, and this is our project for First Lego League.
Hi, my name is Brady Horton. According to VDOT and SMART scale, between the years 2013 and 2019, there were 12 crashes at the intersection of Highway 58 and State Route 620 in Carroll County, Virginia, causing injuries and property damage to citizens.
Hi, I'm Dustin Mond, and this is our solution. The AC web is made out of graphene-enforced nylon, or it stands for anti-crash web, and is a wall that pops up when sensors detect cars may crash.
Hi, I'm Katie. We research our project on the internet with newspapers and I talk to people in our community.
Okay, now we're going to present our project. Right here, as you can see, this is Highway 58, and this is State Route 620, and the AC web. Katie?
So how this project works is, well, these lanes, these streets have a stop sign right here, but these don't, so they're free to go. So a car comes over these sensors at the same speed these do, the sensors will sense that there's probably going to be a car crash. So when they sense that, the graphene-enforced ropes will pop up and stop the car and prevent a car crash. Do you have any questions?
I know exactly where you're talking about. I've observed a crash there one time.
And they came up with this project all on their own.
Now, I will say that the three, the two and the third one came up. You need to present this to them so that they can do some innovative design against this.
Well, thank you guys so much for letting us present to you.
Thank you.
I would like to make one comment. You guys, First Robotics Lego League, I know where you're at. I used to teach high school machine shop in With County, and we were at the big league, the big robots. So keep doing it. It's great. It's great to see the innovation. I call it problem solving, critical thinking, so you guys are getting on the right track. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for, young men and ladies, for coming tonight. How old do you got to be to get involved in Carroll County and make it a better place? There's no wage limit, and your opinions are a fresh thought for me and the board. I'd like to see more young people get involved in making Carroll County a better place, and this is certainly is a positive start for you. I salute you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
There used to be a statement that said, "A young mind's a terrible thing to waste." Well, I don't see any waste with this young mind. I think it's a wonderful thing that you're doing. I think it's just great.
How about the parents stand up? If you want to come forward, take a picture here, come on up here and take a picture. I know you're proud of these young people. Come right on up here and take a photo.
Good, there you go.
And this gentleman right here, I don't know if y'all know it or not, the light that you have at Gladeville School, this gentleman right here recommended that light.
It's very instrumental in getting that accomplished.
Exactly.
When y'all want to get involved, they do listen. And the folks at VDOT were very helpful, and so was Sherri Dorr.
I really liked the fifth grade students. It was my favorite class when I was teaching. And when I was a student, the three years I was in the fifth grade, I really enjoyed.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Y'all have been easy. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Michael, you're on deck. Just come on up to bat.
This is a safety concern. Location's Holiday Express on Airport Road, southbound. It's about 100 yards above the intersection, 58 and 221.
Michael, if you could hold Jason and pull that up on the screen so that they can see it. So they can see what Michael's talking about. Let us warm up. Lisa, how much money is available in the Salem district with this coming round of funding?
We don't know for sure yet. In the past two, the district funding pot has been around $30 million.
Thirty million, and that excludes the U-Mont tax money for any one, right?
Definitely, it excludes that. This is strictly for the SMART scale process. There's still revenue sharing, there's transportation alternatives program, there's deep step. So there's some other funding programs out there. SMART scale is just a larger list for the state.
A couple of months ago, Citizen Five Forks pointed this out to me, and I had never even thought about it, but there it's gone. There's a narrow shoulder of road, and then it's a long ways to the bottom. This is nothing unusual in Carroll County. It's the only place I know of there's a parking lot at the bottom. So if anybody should ever come off of that, anything below, person or vehicles in danger. In the right set of circumstances, say a car is coming down, swerved to the left and overcorrected, they could go airborne, hit the lot, and actually go across, hit other cars, or hit the building. And what he wants to see is a guardrail, and I think that's a very practical idea. I think it'd be relatively cheap. If a car ever goes off there, it's going to be a disaster, especially with the people in it. And I'd like for that to be placed on the safety list, or whatever the list is, be looked at. That's it.
That whole intersection there, I guess VDOT, that whole section there is a pretty big crash area, is it not?
Yes, it is.
So that, if we were to do something like maybe SMART scale on that area there, could that include that on up along that edge as well?
It could. Yeah, it's centralized. There's not a whole lot of...
Can really.
You know, and we have to, we take a good look at the type of crashes, too. But yes, sir, we can do that.
I know that one time before, we discussed some additional lighting in there, because there's so many pedestrians crossing the street from the motels to the restaurants, and motel to the convenience stores, and I think that's something we ought to see if we can get worked in there also. There's no crossing light or anything, or crossing lane or anything in there for them to cross at, so.
Could I ask a question, Buzz Dan? Is there, like in some places, they do just like overwalk things? Would that help at all in some locations? And I don't know the cost of that kind of thing.
I would imagine, but I'd say there's some expense.
Because I've seen them, I mean, as we all drive through there, we've seen people try to move to the middle of the way and take the chances.
And I suppose we could do, like we walkways down to the farmer's market along the motels on each side of the road, is that something that could be done in one big project on SMART scale? I'm just...
You'd really have to have a heavy pedestrian presence, I think, to justify that cost. And you might have, but it'd be very, very expensive to do that. I guess, you know, we could look at alternatives for pedestrian access. You know, that grade may be something we could do.
Anybody else?
Lisa, can I ask a question? When do you expect to finish the second part of the construction on Acun Ridge on North 52?
The bids are open on that project in November. I think it's November 13th. So they'll probably start to work, you know, weather breaks next year.
Okay, great, great.
That was a successful application that you all submitted on, I think it was the first or second grade.
I guess another place would be in front of Carroll County High School that might be worth looking at. You know, for walkways and crosswalks and there. That's something else that would probably be worthwhile. I'm not sure the number of students that walk, but they have no... If they can get over to, across the street, what's that market, TNT? Not TNT.
Cavalier Express.
Cavalier Express, they can get to Hillsville, but on the other side, I don't know how far up it goes.
Well, it comes down in front of the motel site, the Southern State's on 58. And then I went over the other day, and the football team crosses, all the busy groups cross during the day. They have to hold hands, and all the sports teams. And then when the softball game's going on, there's a huge presence of parking. And since the school expanded and lost a little of parking, big basketball games and football games, people are parking on the side where the tennis courts are, walking across. So you're getting a huge amount of traffic there, pedestrian traffic, not at normal times, but during school events, during school hours and minutes. And a great portion of that kind of project, I don't know, signalization or crossings and the sidewalk will get you back to where people, kids can get back to town on the sidewalk.
Is it something that, like, let's say if we have ballgames, it's not normal during school hours, let's say in the evening, could we have flashing lights in that area?
Now, we do. We have a pedestrian crossing, a push-button crossing. You know, designated space for traffic to yield pedestrians now.
What's the speed limit down there?
Well, it's 25 during school hours. I think it's 35.
No, it's 40 under school. It's very late. Forty and the lights aren't bright, because I had to go out to Fairview Church today. It has a 40, so it's not speed.
Is that something that could be adjusted? Or what would you have to do to adjust the speed limit?
I can look at that.
Okay. Anybody else have any?
And Michael reminded me, we do have another program on Safe routes to schools that's still available. Is that the same process as SMART scale? Speed on the town?
Does transportation alternatives really kind of...
So I can take a look at that.
Okay.
I know you mentioned Brushy Fork and Flower Gap and all of... I'm, I still have a huge concern at Exit One. It's just such a, it's so dark. It's so populated at night, it seems like. And then, of course, the traffic going up Lambsburg Mountain. It's, truck traffic especially is terrible up through there at times. I don't know if the signs are not being able to be seen well enough or what, but I just, I feel like that still needs to be an issue for us to address.
And you all submitted an application two years in a row, and it was, it's such a good project. I told Mr. Dalton, I should have had that, because I really liked that project. Was to do improvement in that interchange, and I guess the cost was just so high that it didn't score well at all. But those are the type of things that make good projects. If we can do them cost efficiently, you know, $30 million, it doesn't go far. And I think that was, I don't know, it was $11 million, something like that.
One sign that to me would be helpful there, I don't think it's there, is, it says, "Do not use GPS directions." Because I've seen that at other places, and I've actually done it myself, followed by GPS, ended up on top of the mountain. So once a truck start up there, it's almost impossible for them to turn around. So if you had something at the bottom of the hill that says, "Do not trust your GPS," I think would be very helpful.
I know, just this past weekend, there was a truck stuck on Orchard Gap Mountain. They're doing the same thing. They're following their GPS, and it's taking them on wild goose chases out. He ended up having to get, I think they had to get two wreckers to get him to the top of the mountain, so.
We have all kinds of problems with that.
I'd like to say thank you to all of y'all for the work you've done down our way. Projects, the paving on Oak Ridge Road, the site distance you cut up at the other entrance. I appreciate it, and I've had quite a few compliments on it, so thank you.
Thank you.
I had, I want to bring one thing up to mind. I had a couple citizens call me that live on Route 638 between Doug Spur and Laurel Fork, and they're getting a lot of tractor and trailer traffic through there now, and the road's barely wide enough in places for two cars. I talked to Mr. Phillips down at the Hillsville residency, and he told me that the process they had to go through to try to get restrictions on that road is for 638. But I drive it, and it's narrow. It's very, very narrow.
What we can do is a process similar to what we're doing down your way is we'll get truck counts, just to kind of get an idea of the magnitude of the problem, if it's one or two, or if it's 200. And that tells us a lot of which way to go, so we can do that on 638.
Okay, if you would, take a look at 638. Thank you.
Lisa, back to Exit One. Does that project have to be done all as one big project? Could it be phased in?
We can, yeah, we can look at that.
So that get that cost down. When I was down there, y'all were educating me about this program the other day, that it's $12 million, smaller, but not getting...
We can, one of the things we did, we extended the deceleration lane on 77, and the traffic control alone for that was just astronomical, but that was the biggest benefit, you know, that was linked in that lane. So, you know, kind of got us in a bad spot. Sure, if y'all are interested in it again, we can see what we can do about maybe phasing it out.
It just, with your limited pot and money, and quite frankly, I guess we're sort of behind the ball because our comp plan doesn't really refer to the, and get to all the points that we probably could if it was in our comp plan, like spelled out with these projects. But it, I know Bob's got a lot of ideas and the other guys, and I sent out a... But it, I know Bob's got a lot of ideas than the other guys, and I sent out a whole list of ideas dealing with 52 to the board. I, I don't think I shared them with you guys, but if we come up with a list, can y'all, just a preliminary list, can y'all, along with Route 58, the 620 intersection with kids talking about, because I think it's a safety concern too? Can y'all sort of lead us in the right direction with this one, those projects? Is the right one to submit? I like the high school one because I see all those kids then crossing the road. And I, Martha brought up the one over at, uh, Exit, uh, near Airport Road, which I had thought about it, which is, it seemed like a sidewalk project and stuff, crossing might be worthy of, for safety. Because we've got four, 500 motel rooms on one side and the restaurants are on the other side. Or out to show these or whatever.
Yes.
But if, uh.
Sure.
We didn't have that. I guess the input tonight, but I thought we'd get on the smart scales since it's primary, but if we built the list and we can just ship it.
Yes, sir.
Even y'all was like, don't look good.
We're beginning to do that, that's, that's what we do, that's what we need to do.
Would you go to Airport Road and Colson Church? We're having a situation right there, tractor and trailers are coming from southbound, headed northbound right there, and they're getting stuck with their, uh, what's that, uh?
Their dollies.
Their dollies are getting stuck. I've had five or six of them in the last year that I've seen personally there. See, as they come headed north to Colson Church, they turning right to get back to the interstate, and their dollies are catching the, you can see the grooves, and that wrecker, a lot of them have to be moved by a wrecker. You know, that wouldn't take a whole lot, and of course, it may be a whole project there that we need to.
Which, which end is, is that, that's on 620?
On 620, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, point it out so you know.
At the Exit 19, yeah.
Yeah, this, this is Colson Church, one to the interstate. Oh, this is, comes, comes down to Airport.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a, it's a steep incline right here.
That's a dangerous corner.
While we're on.
And just on down the road from that, you got where you turn to go Laurel, to Laurel School, it's a, right there, it's, that's a blind curve right there. If you're turning left, coming from the bottom of Page, trying to go to the school, you don't see the traffic coming on the right there. And I'm just wondering if that whole section all the way back to the interstate may be consideration of a foreland or widening of the road, plus economic development? Because you got two, you got one pad on one side that's, uh, you know, open for economic development, and I think the other one's up for sale.
Lisa, to make, to make that happen out there, is that within the corridor within the interstate that you could make that case of that safety improvement or improvement there to leave, like, a secondary corridor as this, as the interstate's closed that they get off?
Yes.
Does that happen to you that we'd have to take to make that happen?
The major problem Rex, along with you, is, uh, on 620 is up at Stones grocery, turn, turn, trying to hang a lift, these tractor and trailers getting off when, uh, when 77 was blocked, trying to turn left to going down. Or if they're coming from Poplar Camp.
Turning right.
Trying to turn right.
Yep.
And, uh, they're, they're across the ditch on the opposite side of the road and up on that, uh, where, on that lot there, they're, they're up there and, uh, the, uh, and, and I'd like, Lisa, I'd like to thank you for being open to, uh, to, uh, 52 North from Hillsville to Poplar Camp. It is absolutely the worst primary road in Carroll County, and I thought I'd seen everything down there, but not long ago. And I'm not criticizing, uh, because it's an industry, and we need them bottomly, came down through 52 going to With, from, I guess, Woodlong Properties and Allegheny, North Carolina properties, going down in With County. They've, they are, they have thousands of acres in and around in With County. And there were 13 big John Deere tractors pulling a new John Deere four-wheel wagon behind that. And the tractors, I'm not talking about like when I had my upside down situation. I'm talking about tractors that have to go off the edge of the road to, when they meet traffic, and it was 13 of them in a row, and, uh.
Eight-wheel tractors.
Yeah, and if the brethren from down at Salem, uh, I'd invite you to come up here sometime when there's a wreck on 77. Or just come up on a holiday and bring your family up to, uh, 52 there. 12 tractor and trailers and, uh, Brother Da, Brother Dalton there informs me that, that there's one place of 500 feet to pass on 52 from, uh, Poplar Camp to Hillsville. And if you don't have a Ferrari, you can't pass there, you know? And so, so I, I want to thank you for being open. It, it, it doesn't take a genius to drive that road and take an engineering look at it. It is in terrible shape and is, and impossible when traffic, when 7, when anything on 77 north or south has a problem, be it a wreck, accident, highway construction, or just, uh, holiday travel. It, it, it all goes to 52 between Poplar Camp and Hillsville. And it may come on a fancy gaff and they come through Hillsville, but they end up, uh, going down 52. End of my sermon. I know you, you've been, uh, the, uh, but these guys in Roanoke, I suspicion they think 581 is like a, uh, like a dirt road down there. And, you know, but I'd come visit on 52, uh, north from Hillsville sometime.
But that, but that is, and Mr. Dalton, that, that is one of the reasons we're successful in getting that 52 improvement that we did get, or you did get, because it's an alternate for 77 traffic, and that goes a lot of safety importance.
The, um, it's just, I mean, it is just a narrow crooked road, and if you go down past that rock quarry down there, uh, the guard rails they put up last about a, a week and a half, and two tra, two trucks meet, or two tractor and trailers, or a tractor and trailer and a car meet. And the truck, the only choice is he goes, he takes the trailer into the guard rail, and the guard rail goes completely, okay?
I think 52 on that corridor is one of those projects that we can pick smaller segments out of, that line fit with.
And that's what we've been doing, Saliel. Uh, Lisa's been excellent to work with. We, we did some, uh, uh, project on, uh, down to Double Ford at that rock quarry, I don't know, 15 years ago. And then we did, uh, something, uh, later, but it is still a, a two, three blind curves there and a narrow road, you know?
Anybody else? All right, I'll close the, uh, public hearing at 6:45. Do I have a motion to approve the payment and invoices?
Before you go on, I'd like to thank V-Dot for showing up tonight and trying to get started early. I appreciate y'all educating me down the office the other day.
You're welcome. You all gave me a lot of ideas. Thank you, thank you, this was a good school.
Appreciate you coming up here.
It's a long ride.
It's a ride.
Either for the second or the fourth.
Y'all just need to move up here. So it won't be some far drive.
If y'all would go back in time, you could save some money. My grandpa said, used to, you had a, a, a tanker of a vehicle, and they had heated tar, and the people napped in rocks in the road, and they had, uh, people getting five-gallon bucket of hot tar stepping in, and head gum boots stepping in water buckets or water tub, and they'd spread, they poured their tall, hot tar down the road there and come back stepping in the water again, you know?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Now I'll go. Payment and invoices, that's down here. Okay. All right, do I have a motion, uh, to make payment of the invoices? Or does anybody want to have a question about anything?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, does, we discussed one bill and is it included in that, Saliel?
It is not.
Okay. Then, then I move that we pay these, uh, bills here.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second. Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Robbie?
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes. All right, uh, do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from the previous meeting as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
So move.
Motion and a second, start with you, Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
I say yes. All right. New business. Do I have a motion to, uh, approve the consent calendar? Or does anybody have any questions concerning consent calendar?
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the consent calendar as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, start with you, Joe?
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. All right, that brings us up to, uh, Hillsville Volunteer Fire Department.
Just a chair, I'll get it for you. Just all of you are aware, a few months ago, uh, we had an unfortunate accident, a fire truck, uh, was asking for the night, it was approved with the board, takes about 14 months to give this fire truck, we got an insurance settlement, the fire department has got money available to make down payment on this truck. We've also agreed to use their paid firefighter funds on an annual basis, because of the state, to make the yearly, monthly, whatever payment there is on this. We're going to ask for permission to go ahead and order this truck.
Question, question? Do, does the payment for the truck include the insurance settlement, uh, that money going to?
Yes, insurance settlement will be used as part of the down payment on the truck. And there's also some money for equipment that, that will be used to outfit the truck. So, that, while it is a debt, I know you're concerned about that, the debt service will be paid by the fire department itself with no local funds. This is a, while it's an unfortunate accident, the trucker will order better suits, uh, their needs than maybe even the truck that they have.
Anybody else have any discussions?
I know Mr. Durbin sent an email today asking that, uh, we add to this approval, that it be subject to review and approval of the contract documents by legal counsel? Is that correct?
That would be my recommendation. There are a few things, um, that I would like to clarify from the, from the documents, more of them being that, um, as drafted now, it would be applying Ohio law, and, uh, any, just people have to be settled in, uh, importantly, in Columbus, Ohio. Do you want to change that? I had a number of other concerns, but you can approve it subject to.
All right, do I have a motion with those concerns and whether?
I move that we, uh, approve the purchase of the fire truck, and after my recent, recent double tractor roll, when I was pinned down, the tractor and diesel fuel dripping on my legs and stuff, I decided the fire department was very, very important, and, uh, and, uh, you know, you don't need them, do you need them? But, uh, it, it got my attention that time, and, and I appreciate what they do. I, my, that's my motion to, to approve this purchase.
All right, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any more discussion?
So the motion is approval for ordering the fire truck purchase subject to legal.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, start with you, Joe?
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. All right, that brings us up to US Census. James, would you step forward? Is he here?
Guess not. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm part of the elderly group.
That's all right.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. Uh, my name is Jim Sivesky. I'm from Withville in With County, so.
That's an old Carroll County name, I figured it was.
And, uh, I am with the Census Department or Bureau. Uh, my job is what's called a partnership specialist. My job is to go around and talk to local governments, uh, to get them to see the importance of starting what's called a complete count committee. It's a CCC, in this case, it would be set up on a countywide basis. Our whole goal is to try and get as many people as we can to complete the census. And the reason we want to do that, and I was glad to hear about all these numbers and things, is the fact that there's 600, over $675 billion sitting in Washington that's going to be distributed to the states and the local municipalities based on population counts on this new census. It's very, very important that we obviously get as much participation as we can in the census. Little back, a little bit of history on the census itself is the fact that the first census was conducted back in 1790. We've had 22 censuses taken over up until this year. This is our 23rd census that, uh, the, the country has done. It's required by the Constitution that people comply with the census. They're, uh, required to comply. Also, as part of the, uh, ability to comply with the census is the fact that we are limited as to, we cannot give out any information whatsoever. Everything is totally confidential with the census. Give you a little bit of history on the census, like I said, started in 1790. We had a population in the United States in 1790 of a little over, uh, 3.9 million people. The largest populated state during that time, anybody want to take a wild guess what it was?
Austin, Massachusetts?
State.
Massachusetts.
Virginia.
Virginia. Most populated city?
Williamsburg, I don't know.
That's what I would have thought. New York. In, I'm just going to skip ahead a little bit here as far as the years. In 1920 was the first year that we recorded over 100 million people living in the United States. At that time, the most populated state was, 1920 was.
New York.
New York. Right, New York City being the largest. 1940, we topped 132 bil, uh, I'm sorry, 132 million people. And that is the most recent census, by the way, in 1940, that you can go back in and trace your grandparents and their great-grandparents. The data is what's called the Rule of 72. Again, the data cannot be released to the public for 72 years. So, again, you can do 1940 and back, again. So, again, you can do 1940 and back, again, with the next census, then of course it'll move forward to 1950s. Anybody want to take a wild stab in 2010 when our population was here in the United States?
300 million.
Close, 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 close. 308 million. 308 million people. The largest state in 2010 was?
California.
California. New York City still being the number one as far as population in the states. What do we do with the census once we get it? Again, we're mandated in the Census Bureau to do the census and to have our numbers sent to the President by December the 31st of 2020. The information is going to go to the states at the end of March 2021. Now, this data, of course, is going to be used not only to put out that $675 billion based on population, but it's also used to reapportionments, our number of representatives in Congress, and everything is based on population. So, long story short, that's why it's important, it's imperative, that we get participation here in the counties. If we don't get participation here in the counties, here's a number, for number crunchers that I like to use, is the fact that the George Washington Institute calculated in the state of Virginia, for every person that we miss that does not report on their census, we lose $2,000 per person per year. That sounds like a lot of money. Remember, we do the census every 10 years. So we multiply that $2,000 by 10. So all of a sudden, you're looking at $20,000 per person over that 10-year period. If you've got a family of five people, there's $100,000 that Carroll County could have used to fix the roads. To bring businesses into us, to build new hospitals, shopping centers, again, money used for the good of the population. I had sent some information down, and hopefully it's in your packet of things. One of the things that people ask, and I was in a meeting in Bland the other day, and the treasurer asked, we said, well, people ask, well, where's the money, where's the money go for? Where do we get the money? Once we get the money, what do we do for it? I like to say, well, there's 48 different things right here, what we do with the population, I'm sorry, with the population numbers. Again, not only is the apportionment, giving state funds, local funds out, but again, there's just a whole slew of things. It's the population numbers do for us. Now, again, what I'm here for is to talk about starting this complete count committee. We have a complete count committee for municipals, and we have one for the county, and there's also one for the state. The county one is what I also sent you a little sheet about. It shows a committee that's usually headed up by the chairman, and the chairman can appoint someone, usually it's the county administrator that seems to get that job. But again, it's totally up to you. The committee is what I like to call the movers and shakers of Carroll County. It's the influential people that we can get on this committee that can help spread the word why it's so important to complete the census. The census itself is going to be done through, one of three ways, actually, one of four ways. The first way that they're doing this year is going to be doing on the computer. We want to do it online. It's going to be really interesting in the fact that it's going to save us, when I say us, the Census Bureau, $100 per person that does it online versus having somebody go out, knock on the doors, having to pay people on the phone banks and stuff. But again, the easiest way it's going to be doing it is on the census. The census is going to be online. Again, we can still do by mail. They're going to have 59 different questionnaires in different languages for everybody. Hopefully, that we're going to cover the majority of languages that are out there, 59 different languages that the questionnaire is going to be in. We're going to have a phone bank with 13 different languages covered on the phone bank. As most of us know, on a phone bank, you sit there, you get put on hold for a while, eventually you're going to say, ah, heck with it, and forget it. Well, the fourth way to do it is going to be come about the end of April, when you've got somebody coming to your door. This is why we need that complete count committee. We want to use local people. Again, not only to spread the word out, but people are going to be more inclined to listen to you than to somebody like me, that I'm a foreigner, if you will, down here. Again, we're going to be hiring, and this is a phenomenal number, 500,000 people to do the census. 500,000 people to do the census. Now, I'm going to put on my hat as recruiter and say that we're looking for people. We're looking for people who will be going up to the doors, knocking on doors. It's going to be a part-time job. The job itself is going to pay 13.50 an hour. They're going to pay 58 cents a mile. It's a great gig if you want to pick up some cash. You're going to work from 20 to 40 hours a week, and it's going to last from eight to about 10 weeks. And again, your job will be mostly in this area, be within Carroll County. Again, we want to try and get the local people out in front of other local people to get the information. Now, one of the hardest things that we find is the fact that when we go to count people, obviously, we tend to miss people. We tend to miss the kids, zero to five years old. We tend to miss a lot of the veterans. We tend to miss, you know, in the old days, if you will, it used to be a mom, a dad, and kids at home. That was, that's modular family, boom. Nowadays, it's mom, and dad, and kids, and uncles, aunts, cousins, people off the street, who knows? Now, the problem with the count is the fact that a lot of people are concerned that we're going to report them to ICE. We go to a house and they're growing marijuana. We can't do that, we cannot say anything to anybody. You can't tell, go to the police, you can't go to ICE, I can't go to the FBI, I can't do anything. Your data is totally confidential. Not even the President can pull the information about you specifically. We can do groups, we can do businesses the same way. I can't go back and say, well, this business is doing this, this, and that. Again, they can do a generalization, but again, they'll never be able to use that data. The only time they're going to be seeing that is in 72 years, that they're going to be able to get down and actually see that John Doe lives at 1217 on Euclid Avenue. So, the confidentiality part is the part that is so very, very crucial. No one is going to be penalized for participating in the census. That's why this committee has got to go out, and again, spread the word that everything is confidential, it's private, and we need the participation in the program. Besides being required by law. Our, and the little information that I sent, I sent a little copy here with the CCC on it. And again, the committee is yours, it's not mine. We've had committees as small as three people. In Rule Retreat, which has about 20 people, all 20 of them are on the board on this CCC. They've got like 24 people on the complete count committee. So it's imperative that we get it started. I've been on the job since May. Kind of hard to get people excited in May, June, July. But now, here it is, October, November's coming up. The census itself is going to, we will be sending out postcards about the 12th, I think it is, of March. And on postcard, it's going to give you a number. Again, once you get that number, you can go online, use that number, and submit your information. Towards the end of March, you'll probably get another card, just to remind you. In April, if you don't do it, you'll still get some reminders. Of course, all this time, we're going to be bombarding the airwaves with messages to complete the census. Again, at the end of April, if they have not completed the census, either by mail, the phone, online, again, you're going to get somebody coming to the door and trying to get that information from you. So, again, I can't emphasize enough how important it is that we get a project started. And, again, I ask of the board to try and get a representative to be the Chair of this committee. And we will work with them, train them, and we'll help them out any way that we can. But the goal of that committee is to go to a lot of the events that are going on in Carroll County, have a booth there. Again, we can supply all the information to them. We can have all types of literature and things. We can do things like on utility bills, put a little note on utility bills, on tax bills, whatever, to do the census. So again, we need your help. We talked about recruiting, we need help there. We need people to be able to go out and knock on the doors. We need help setting up these complete count committees. Very, very important. Again, if you want to get your fair share of money, we need it completed. One other thing is, this year is kind of unique in the fact that wherever you lay your head on April the 1st of 2020 is where you're counted. So if you've got a son or a daughter going up to Virginia Tech, they're going to be counted up in Blacksburg. People in hospitals, prisons, group homes, again, wherever they are on April the 1st is where, who's going to be counted. So again, we've got a prison here, we've got a hospital here, whatever. That's going to be part of your numbers. That's going to how that money will be divvied up based on these other outside forces too, besides people just living here. So again, April the 1st, where you lay your head. And then hopefully, we'll be able to catch more people that way. One last thing is the fact that the questionnaire itself is extremely simple. There's nine questions. The nine questions. How many people are living or staying in the house, apartment, or mobile home on April the 1st? Were there any additional people staying here on April the 1st that you did not include in question one? Is this a house, apartment, or mobile home? What's your telephone number? The number is only going to be used in case your questionnaire gets messed up and they have to get back in touch with you. It's not, we're not collecting phone numbers. Please provide information for each person living here. Start with person number one, what's the person's sex? What's the person's age, and what's the person's date of birth? Is the person Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish of origin? What is the person's race? That's it. You've got maybe 10, 15 minutes at most online to complete this unless you've got a tremendously large family.
So you're probably going to count, you're not looking for US citizens, you're going to count whoever's there?
Correct. Whole idea is whoever, again, putting their head down in that house on April the 1st, we need them to report. And again, that's when we get to, I hate to use the word illegals, but people that don't have the papers or stay here and stuff, we need their counts. And we need, that's why we use the local people to get that support. And the knowledge that they know that this cannot be held against them. If they have 30 people living in the house, I don't care. All we care about is you've got 30 people, it's going to be credited to Carroll County. So, any other questions? Well, I appreciate it. Who do you, who would I need to get with to try and do something on a complete count committee? I tried to come see him, he went in, so.
You're going to want to invite the school system, because they map out all school-aged kids and so forth, and they can identify, but that's still not a, you know, it'd be 3,000 kids' families, so.
Well, like I said, the hardest part is, especially when you get the young kids, with now the mom and dad living apart, who takes the credit for the child? Again, it's going to be based on where that child is staying come April the 1st. So, again, hopefully, we'll be able to capture all the people in the schools. You know, other part, obviously, as part of this committee real quick, is the fact that we need to make sure that we can count the homeless. I don't know if it's a problem here or not, but it's probably a problem everywhere. We just don't see it a lot in our areas. But again, it's going to be extremely important if we do have that complete count committee that we do get people from social services and Goodwill or Salvation Army or whatever, those type of people, food banks and all, that we can go out and reach those people and count them. So, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Meeting schedule. Requested just to have the one Board of Supervisors meeting in November the 18th, and then only one in December. Or that we cancel the one on December 23rd.
So our next meeting is 18?
Yes, November 18th, but I guess we need to make a vote, take a vote on that, or a motion.
Make a motion that we amend the meeting schedule as presented.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Yes?
The November 25th, December 23rd, the January 1st, the reorganization meeting of the census, there's going to be such a long time. December the 9th. We've got a full month. We have new board members too. And I would suggest you move that January 13th up to January the 6th.
I will amend my motion to Mr. Dalton's request.
Who is the second?
I withdraw the second.
Alright, now I need a second to cover the January 6th.
I have a second there.
Alright, I'll start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Bob. Dr. Littler.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes.
And I say yes. Bring us down to the Mount Rogers Community Service Board Performance Contract. No, I've not read it. Glanced through it. I'm not in favor of it. Is this mandated? We need this this month?
The wire that you approved contract on an annual basis. If you read it all, I'll buy your dinner.
This is the first one I've seen, coming on four years.
It lays out the stuff they're doing for you details, how much you're actually contributing to them this year. So this is an annual thing that requires approval of the board.
Three inches thick.
A whole lot of pages. Hate to read it after.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Mount Rogers Community Service Board Performance Contract.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second there.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I've got 50 more pages to read.
Yeah.
I'm not a speed reader.
You have to pass it to know what's in it, right?
Alright, why don't we just do a contingent upon everybody reading it? Somebody want to amend that motion?
No, I don't wish to amend my motion.
You don't want to read that? I do want to read it. Right. A motion and a second. Start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Phillip. Excuse me, Dr. Littler.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll say yes. I want to read it. You may come back and make another motion. Alright, that brings us down to the wired road connection agreement. Alright, that's 237 and 239 is our farmer's market and the, the?
Canary.
Correct. Anybody have a motion concerning the wired road connection agreement?
I'll move, let me do that. I'll move, let me do that.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? What's that, is that going to be a monthly fee?
What they're doing is providing, there'll be a separate contract that you have to enter into for the service. This is a free connection that they're offering and trying to entice people to make those connections. There will be different monthly fees distinguished from this contract.
Does that mandate that we have to hook up?
I don't think, I think they're just asking you.
For the connections now, okay?
With the buyer, that connection is $1,200, $2,500.
If I read it, read what I understood in it, it said that you could pick your provider of choice with it.
Yes.
If you're accepting the free connection and you're granting permission for the property to do this, on that, it's up to you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes.
I say yes. Delinquent tax list. Anybody have any discussion about the delinquent tax list or a motion?
Well, there's something on here about three options to actually publish it, and I'm assuming that it's going to be smaller and smaller print between two pages and 1.33 pages and one page, is that correct?
I think it was the amount of information that was going to be published, wasn't it, Saleil?
Actually, it's the brand size too. You publish it on version one, which is, is two pages, and the print is readable. You go to version two, it's 1.33.
Magnifying glass comes with the rest of them, right?
Version two is 1.33 pages, which means you're reducing the line down about 67% or so. And then version three is on one page, which means it's half size.
I looked at all three, and I recommend, my recommendation is that option one, it's, it is readable, bad news, it costs more, but if people, if people can't read what you send out, what good is it?
It takes a board of actions to print this, whichever option you like.
It's my understanding that the cost of publishing this can be appropriated among the tax, the tax payers, is that not correct? So it makes sense to me to do the option one, if it is a cost neutral situation.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the publication of the delinquent tax list, and that we choose option one, which is the larger print that is readable.
Second.
Would you include your motion to charge back the cost of this?
And with the charge back to the delinquent property.
Do we need to include in it also that there may be some names that need to be removed?
Thank you for bringing that up. My paralegal has reviewed that, and there are property owners on this list who are also on our list in current collections, but not the same property.
Okay, so we can leave that.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Well, as Bob was talking about, where they could read it, as I looked at it, it looked like the first option had more detail in it, the size of the print, I think, was going to be about the same, wasn't it, like the one that the.
Actually, it's a smaller print. What you're saying is a screenshot, so that you can read it.
The first one, I thought had like more description of the property, and the next one had a little less, and then the third one was cheaper to run, but it just had like the name and the amount of tax.
But the font's actually changed to way higher.
All right, any more discussion? Bob, start with you.
Yes.
Dr. Littler.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
I say yes. Bay Corp Volunteer Fire and EMS. So it looks like this is just a renewal for the fire and EMS, volunteer fire and EMS workers comp renewal.
I believe that's true.
$28,000.
I suppose not, it's, I mean, it is.
I make a motion that we approve the workers, workers comp plan for the volunteer fire and EMS.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, I'll start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Littler.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes.
I say yes. Motion carries. County property.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the county EDA, the EDA has a bunch of vacant properties throughout the county. We have compiled a list of those, and I would ask that the requests that y'all consider asking and requesting those properties be returned and be given back to the board of supervisors, and the attorney prepare the proof of transfer, deeds, make that happen.
That's just, that's not all of them. That's just the ones that.
Vacant.
Vacant properties. Should we consider?
I do not believe, some of the properties the EDA has ownership, or something, this building has loans and liens against them, which keep, that's collateral against the loan.
Right. Those were exempted the transfer, right? Anything that's un-free and clear and vacant would be transferred over. This is something that the board had discussed previously, requesting. It may have never been sufficient, but it's something that I think the auditors had recommended.
How about, how about if it wasn't vacant, but there's no debt owed on it, wouldn't that be advantageous for us? Go ahead and get that as well.
Probably I would like to know an instance, yes, the case.
So we could, I guess we could look at that at another time, maybe.
Is the, are you talking about some properties?
Or something. I would think, I think leased property would be part of this transfer, because the EDA leases foreign rights and stuff. I'm trying to think of a building that meets what you're talking about. But if that's part of the request, that's the board's decision.
That'd be my preference. I don't know about you all, but anyway, I'll entertain a motion, whatever that motion says.
Question, would there be some abandoned properties that were the fellow died or something, and nothing like that in it, right?
No, this is currently property owned by the EDA.
Oh, okay.
And has nothing to do with private ownership, any of that. My understanding, what we were trying to accomplish with this is that the board would get a seat prior to declaring the transfer, hold the public here, the transfer of the back to the EDA for sale, disposed, that y'all would have the control of that property prior to things happen. I thought that was the purpose.
Yep.
Speed, that would speed up things, maybe?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we have, request the vacant properties and parcels to be deeded to Carroll County at this time, and then we can look over the remainers, remaining properties at a later time and see if there are any others we can take out of that group.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
I say yes. Bring us down to old business. To pick committee appointments. And I think that Carolyn Honeycutt has put in for this, at least I was told that.
She did.
Is it on there?
Mm-hmm.
So I make a motion that we approve Carolyn Honeycutt to the Social Services Board.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Starting with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Littler.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes.
I say yes.
Mr. Chairman, one question on that. Michelle, Saleil, could one of y'all let her know, we have a meeting tomorrow night, and we, I think we need her there for a quorum, and she needs to get sworn in tomorrow if she can, at all possible.
That's right. Thank you. And the reason I made the appointment is that that's the position for sulfur springs. Each, each one of them has a, each district of the county has a person on the Social Services Board, and that position was vacant. All right, down to board member comments. Start with you, Joe.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for being here, very informative. It's great to see those young people here from fifth grade, Gladville, working on engineering projects already. I want to extend a huge thank you to our paid and volunteer EMS people. I know Mr. Martin will back me on this, but the job they did that day was professionally done. It was, it was done, and we have a lot of volunteers in this county that train and work to be professional, to be paid, and they don't get, they don't get to pay for it, but they, they do their job anyway. It requires a lot of hours. So if you see any of these people out there, thank them for the job they do. It can be thankless. It can be a thankless job, but it's a very important job to the county. I know at one time, all fire and rescue in Carroll County was volunteer, and the times have changed, I understand that, but it, it costs the county a lot of money to put paid professionals in here, but we have to have them. That's just part of it. But these people that's still out here volunteering and still recruiting volunteers, I would like to see this board work on trying to do a, what I call R and R, recruit and retain. We need to try to do something for our volunteers and make it, make it good enough to where they want to volunteer. I did it for 20 years. I know it's, it's a thankless job, but hopefully in the near future, this board can look at doing something to retain and to recruit more volunteers in this county and take some of the, the money burden off of us. I want to thank the people that, working for the county. Right now, we're going through some pretty tough times, and we have been. Our county administrator interim has, has been doing an excellent job for us. Very proud of him and his staff and the people there. Our departments are working harder. I feel like they're, they understand what's going on, and the easiest thing in the world to do is quit. That is the easiest thing in the world to do. But that doesn't get anybody anywhere. An old football coach told me one time, he said, "There's no I in team," and it's going to take a team effort to get this county back up and going, and going back where we need to be. And I want to thank everybody that's working hard, working diligently. I know we've taken some desperate steps in freezing wages and freezing salaries and hiring and all this sort of thing to try to get this thing under control, not because we wanted to, we had to. But I want everybody out there that works for Carroll County to understand that I appreciate what you're doing, and in times we're doing it in, and I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing to try to get this thing back afloat, get it back going. County faces a whole lot of issues right now. We're in an election year, we're in, we're in all this, this turmoil of people leaving and, and all this sort of thing. So we just got to hang in there. We got to hang in there as a county, as a board and as a county, to right the ship and get it going, and that's what I diligently want to work for, and I know these guys up here are committed to do that also. With that being said, I'm finished.
Thank you, Joe. Phil.
I'd like to thank everybody for participating tonight, the children for coming and bringing the display they had. They did a tremendous job with that. And I'd like to thank the board. They've been great to work with, and I appreciate where everybody has pulled together and worked. I appreciate our interim administrator. He has really been doing some work, and I appreciate that, and thank you all.
Bob?
I'd like to remind Marco and Stacy that, that whoever's elected in November, that the board usually lets those folks, whoever's elected, come in and go into executive session to get a handle on things, so I would encourage the winner there to come, be prepared. I guess they could, the November meeting probably do, right?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, November and the December meeting. And I'd like to really thank Rex Hill, when I was pinned under that tractor and the diesel fuel dripping down, he got there on his hands and knees and offered me a cigarette, and I told him I didn't smoke, and, but I appreciate that kind remarks, me drenched in diesel fuel and you offering a cigarette and a light, but I guess it's the thought that counts. Would like to thank my dear wife, Margaret, that somebody called her and she came out, ran down and stuck her head in the tractor, and she asked me where my life insurance policies were, and I told her I thought they were probably in the safe deposit box, and she took off and came back in about 20 minutes. And I want to thank the insurance agent because he had his arm around her, trying to comfort her, and it was very, I was told it was a touching scene, and, but, and I put in a little ad in the paper thanking everybody. Frankly, it wasn't any fun under that dag gum tractor, and, and thank goodness for a ditch that the highway department had tapered down deep and wide, and it had to be for my suit of my riches to fit down in that, but it kept the tractor off of me, and, and thank the good Lord for having mercy on me. Like to thank each person for being here, but I especially appreciate the folks involved in that rescue, and I did, I did put an ad in the paper, and thank you, and thank you, Rex. I thought about smoking one, but I just didn't, you know?
What you fail to realize, Margaret said you needed a smoke.
Smoke, yeah.
She had me a cigarette and a light.
I understand, you know, we've been married 48 years, and we're, you know, she's always thinking of me, so.
All right, Dr. Littler.
I really can't follow that.
You don't want to, probably.
I would just like to say a couple things. I really enjoyed the fifth graders tonight. It's really good to have them come and public speak and, and have a demonstration for us, and that was really great. And I also would like to make the announcement that Twin County Airport has a new manager as of the first of the month. His name, name is Aaron Brummett, and I'm hoping I can get him here to the board meeting soon, and he can introduce himself to everybody and give everybody an update on the airport.
Bob?
I'd like to thank all the kids that come out tonight. It was really neat to see them involved in that program, and just a lot of people make fun of things, but.
It was really neat to see them involved in that program and, and just, a lot of people make fun of things, but I love Legos. I still love Legos. I still get them and put them together and it's a lot of fun to do, it relaxes your mind and it's a lot of fun to do that. It was, it's kind of ironic, they come and present this program because I was contacted by the fifth grade at Hillswell Elementary looking for a project that they could do and I suggested, uh, the old county jail for them to see, maybe come up with a repurposed project for it. And I haven't heard what the results was, but I think it was a pretty, pretty good idea. Also, just reiterate what Joe said about our volunteer fire and EMS. They put in so many hours just to get trained. Hundred and sixty hours for a minimum training program to get to be a firefighter one. Then you, to go on, you have to have extra hours for firefighter two and hazmat. And your EMTs have, I guess, a hundred and eighty, two hundred hours of training and all these guys that do this for volunteer, it's like Joe said, it's a very, very thankless job. And we never appreciate them or never know until we need them for something. Just keep that in your mind and, and the retaining recruitment process would be something we really need to work on. I've been approached by a few people about, it's kind of ironic because I was, about the baseball and softball program coming up with the rec department, about wanting to be, them to get, the department to get back into a sanctioned league. And in our information package, there was a note, the minutes from their meeting and it talked that somebody had come and shared that with them. Well, the minutes was cut off and I didn't get to see what they had, may have, what conclusion they had come to with it. So I would like to make sure that that's something that we're looking and working towards because I think that the, the, I know that when we used to be a part of Dixie Youth, it was a big deal for the, for the kids in this county. And, uh, they, I know Larry used to do an opening day. I never played baseball, never coached baseball, my son never played. I just had friends that did and relatives that did and I know Larry used to do a big opening day where they had hot dogs and announced the teams out on the field and it was, I, I think that is all comes from being part of a sanctioned league and I think it's something I'd like to see our rec rec department look into.
I echo that and I know, you know, but I agree one hundred percent with what you're saying.
I thank everybody for being here tonight. I really thank Salil for the job that he's doing and for the information that he is passing to us. We're getting more information about things that we never seen before than I, than I can possibly imagine. Thank y'all.
Well, I have to piggyback on what everybody said. And I would like to compliment Salil, he has, he sees the problem and he gives us solutions. Don't say that much. And I really appreciate the Gladwell Elementary School being here, that was, that was great. We need to continue that whenever possible. We've had the, the FFA here, the debate team or the parliamentary team. And that's just great. And I appreciate everyone for being here tonight and communicating with us and working with us. And it's going to be tough down the road. It's going to get tougher down the road, just to give you a heads up. And that's, be careful going home. And that's all I have to say and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dalton, the county administrator, comment.
Thought you was going to do an ordinance to protect Bob.
Oh, I did, I meant to do that. But I, I'll put that off till next minute.
Do what now?
I was going to introduce an ordinance, make it illegal for you to be higher than four inches off the ground at any point in time.
Well, I was down right on the edge of the ground there and just what was above me was bad, though.
You, you're past nine lives, I don't know how many you have, but, but anyway, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dalton.
Well, Joe, uh, we did go through the requirements we would refuse sometime last week. It's half the night down there. We talked about retention and how they can do it. I explained some of the things that I've done in the past. They were supportive of those things, but each one of those costs money. Which we will deal with and next year with budgets, this is coming up. It is important that the board and citizens pat them on the back, they're working. The firemen, the firefighters, one is two hundred hours just to train them, or you can do anything. Firefighter two, you trip for more than that, so they do have a tough job. At least fire chiefs, we try to say that we understand and we'll try to do something. Hopefully that came down. I appreciate y'all continuing to let me stay here in Carroll County. I'd like to thank Stan Justin and all these guys for working on things we've done today and putting all this together for me. They need the credit for being here and showing, pulling all those GIs up, found them, making them happen. So, but I'm ready to go home. I'm making a motion.
You go with us fifty-two.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Slidely. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.